Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome you to the December 2nd Planning Commission meeting for the city of Stonecrest. I asked it this time if you would please silence your phones before we start the meeting. And as you know, the Planning Commission is the recommending body to the city council for applicants that come before the city in order to do business, expand, get special land use permits. But tonight, ladies and gentlemen, the Planning Commission Department will come forth with their presentations and give us a brief synopsis of the applicants which are coming in tonight. The applicants that are on the agenda tonight will have 10 minutes to present their case. They also have time for rebuttal if they choose not to use all of their 10 minutes. And then after the opposition, which also gets 10 minutes to present why the applicant should not be approved, they only get 10 minutes to do the opposition. You don't get any time for a rebuttal. The applicant will have time to come back to rebut any of the information that was presented by opposition. Any persons wishing to speak also in favor of an application, they can do so and that time will be deducted from the applicant. The Planning Commission consists of the five different districts. And also today, if you're in Stonecrest, you had a chance to vote in a runoff election, I believe, for District 5. With that being said, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and start our meeting. This time I'll do a roll call for District 1.
Present.
Commissioner Eric Williams, District 2. Commissioner Joyce Walker, District 5. Commissioner Lamia Hawkins, District 4. Commissioner Pearl Hollis is absent, and I am District 3 Commissioner and the Chair, Eric Hubbard. At this time, I would like to ask the commissioners if we can get approval of the agenda for tonight? Is there a motion for approval of the agenda for this evening?
I make a motion to approve the agenda dated December 2nd, 2025.
I second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Williams, properly second by Commissioner Hawkins. All in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Let the record reflect that all four commissioners present voted for approval of the agenda for tonight. At this time, the floor is open for an approval of the minutes that were dated from the October 7th, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
I make a motion to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes dated October 7th, 2025.
In that motion.
Thank you. It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Williams and seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect that all four commissioners voted for approval of the minutes dated October 7th, 2025. At this time, on the agenda, we're open for announcements from the Planning Department. Are there any announcements for this evening? Seeing that there are none, is there... The floor is open for old business, any old business for this evening? Seeing that there are none, the floor is now open for new business and the Planning Department can come forth with the presentation for the first hearing. Good evening.
Good evening, Plan and Commission. Okay, first item on the agenda is our calendar for the 2026 Planning Commission meeting dates. And if you would, we do have a proposed calendar and would like to get a vote on those dates, the party packet.
Okay. Deputy Director?
Yes, as Deputy Director Ellis still did state, our 2026 calendar for next year, our meeting dates, we would like to have you review them and approve them so that we can place them on the city's website, on the Planning Commission website for next year. If there are any adjustments, please let us know so that we can work through them. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Director. Any commissioners, do I have any questions or concerns about the calendar for 2026?
Yes.
No? Yes, Commissioner Williams.
Just to make sure I am reading this right, the third column, PC first Tuesday of the month, 6:00 PM, we're starting in March, is that correct?
I'm sorry, you mean, starting?
March 3rd, 2026. I don't see a January or a February meeting for a planning commission.
There should be, that oversight. Okay.
On the copy that we have, it starts March of 26 and goes to February of 27.
Okay, so though the dates for January and February are on the 2025 calendar, we'll go back and amend the calendar to add those same dates on the 26th calendar, but those days are currently on the 2025 calendar. Okay? We will make that change.
Is that for a specific reason why they're on the 2025 calendar? Just trying to understand.
No, is typically we... If someone has a deadline that's in December, that calendar date pushed out two months, so we make sure that's in, so we have those dates really available.
Gotcha, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further questions on the calendar? Okay, the floor is open for a vote. Is there a motion to approve the 2026 calendar for next year?
I make a motion to approve the 2026 Community Development Calendar as stated in the document.
All right, is there a second? I second that. Let's go for a vote. All in favor of approving the 2026 calendar for the Planning Commission, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Let the record reflect that all four commissioners voted unanimously to approve the calendar for 2026.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Okay. This time, if you want to go forth with the rest of the agenda and presentation for the night, or the presentation of the first case.
Thank you, sir. Meeting decorum. So since, I think, citizens wishing to speak during... To make comments during public hearing portion of the meeting can do so by attending in person or submitting comments to the Planning Commission staff via email at planningzoning@stonecrestga.gov on the day of the hearing, no later than 2:00 PM to be read into the record at the hearing. When it's your turn to speak, please keep... Please place your comments cards on the podium, say your name, address, and relations to the case. There will be 10 minutes, a 10-minute limit for each side per item during the public hearing. Only the applicant reserve time for rebuttal. The first case is RZ 25004. The address is 2374 Cove Lake Road, David M. Miles Construction, Inc. The request is for a rezoning and map amendment of a parcel from our... I'm sorry, MR1, Medium Density Residential 1, to MR2, Medium Density Residential 2, for the purpose of townhome development. Some background on the parcel. The city of Stonecrest zoning map shows the property is currently zoned MR1, Medium Density Residential. The property is heavily wooded and vacant. The applicant survey showed there's no indication of wetlands on the property. The subject property is situated at Stonecrest Cove Lake Neighborhood and has the property ID identification number of 1607203009. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of said parcel, 2374 Cove Lake Road, from MR1 to MR2. Applicants within 1,000 feet of the subject property were mailed out notifications for rezoning on January, I mean July 25th, I'm sorry, July of 2025. There was a CPI meeting held on August 14th at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. There were six attendees who voiced concerns regarding development. The resident concern were related to stormwater drainage, development standards, traffic and safety, and community amenities. The subject property has a future land use map designation of urban neighborhood. The current zoning is MR1, Medium Density Residential. This is an aerial view of the lot. As you can see, it's vacant, heavily wooded, and near the intersection of Covington Highway and Cove Lake Road. This is a location map. It also abuts Southeast Regional Park, the sports complex. This is a proposed site plan. This plan is similar to the plan that was approved by DeKalb County in 2007 with some minor changes. And the applicant requested one change and staff have other changes that we'll get to during the comment... I mean, conditions. This is a land development, a landscaping plan for the proposed property. This is some building elevations. These are site photos, current conditions on the site. There are a number of conditions that were set forth by DeKalb County. There were 14 conditions that were approved with the original approval of this request. The only request, only condition that the applicant proposed a change to was number 14. Instead of a dog park, the applicant is requesting a totlot or child's playground. There are 18 conditions listed from staff, and these range from stormwater to landscaping. It does include the change for the, from a tot... From a dog park to a playground totlot, which would should include shades, picnic area covering, and those kind of things for the residents. In addition to that, staff felt that one of the conditions did not... Did conflict with another one, so condition number four, we strike through where the minimum requirement was for a 25-foot width and lot width. And the request for the rezoning was to reduce that size down to 22 feet, so it conflicted with another condition, so staff has recommended that we strike that condition. And we do have all 18 listed here, as well as the 14 that were originally listed with the DeKalb County. And staff has recommended approval.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Commissioners, any questions for the Deputy Director? Commissioner Hawkins and then Commissioner Williams.
Good evening. In looking at the elevation, well, maybe this question is for the applicant, but looking at the elevation, I don't see off-street parking. Looks like where there would be a garage are windows, am I mistaken on that?
No, sir. The, the, one of the conditions is requiring a rear entry for most of the units. So this elevation would be the front, but there are elevations that will lead to the garages that are on the rear. They are reloaded.
Got you, thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chairman Hubbard. Can you go back to the site that has the trees on it? I think it was the second slide. Go back. Keep going, keep going, keep going.
It was only two of them.
Go back, yeah, the aerial map.
Okay.
So the red, the outline of the red is where the property is.
Yes, ma'am.
The additional property that's outside of that, is that like a separate parcel or?
Yes, the parcel to the north, closer to the intersection, is a separate piece that's on commercial. And then the parcels to the rear is the city park, the Southeast Sports Complex.
Gotcha. And what's the buffer between the red line by the, I guess that's the park? That's to the, I'm looking at it, to the front. I guess that would be the back, not the front.
I'm sorry.
What is the buffer between?
So there's a transitional buffer.
Okay.
On the rear of this property between the park and the proposed development, and there's a transitional buffer shown on the plan from the current residence and the proposed, as shown, give me one second here. So if you can look at where the streets are terminated, on all the street terminated, that's a transitional buffer, as well as the property to the south is a transitional buffer, 50-foot transitional buffer.
Okay, and is this community a one-way in, one-way out?
Yes, ma'am. One of the conditions set by DeKalb County was it could only have one entrance, and it still meets the access requirement. 75, 75 units would be the maximum that will require, 76 would require a second entrance.
Makes me nervous when we have these subdivisions that just has a one-way in, one-way out. My subdivision does, and we had an emergency and no one could get to their home for like 3, 4 hours because the fire truck, the ambulance, the police, everybody had to block. And that just truly concerns me that these developers are coming into our communities and there are only one-way in, one-way out subdivisions. My little two cents, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the Deputy Director? All right, seeing that there are none, the floor is open for a motion to open public hearing on item RZ 25-004.
I make a motion to open public hearing for RZ 25-004.
Is there a second to the motion?
I second that motion.
All right, with the second being made by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Let the record reflect that all four commissioners voted unanimously to open the public hearing for RZ 25-004. And if the applicant is present, you can give your name and address and you can begin your presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Michelle Battle with Battle Law, 3562 Havershamet, North Lake Tucker, Georgia 30084. I feel like I've been working on this particular project forever, mainly because I actually did the original rezoning back in 2007. This property is indicated by staff is located off of Cove Lake, south of Wellborn and south of Covington Highway and adjacent to the Southeast Atlanta Athletic Center and adjacent to the Cove Lake community. We are currently zoned MR1, same as the complex next door, and we are nestled up against Cove Lake, which is zoned RSM. Back in 2007, when this was approved, we went through quite a bit with the community, very heavily negotiated conditions. Some of the individuals who worked on this with me from the community are actually still in the community. And, you know, at that time, we certainly worked cooperatively to address many of the issues and concerns, which is how you ended up with the 14 conditions that you see before you. And while I certainly understand and appreciate the issues surrounding access, I think that that is really a citywide and countywide, even a metro Atlanta-wide issue because we live in a space where a lot of developers and communities back in the day wanted one-way in and one-way out. And so you see a plethora of communities, particularly along Covington Highway, that have only one-way in and one-way out. They were designed that way and not having connectivity. And when you talk about trying to have connectivity amongst communities, what we find is most people don't want that. They're like, we want to be in this one space and we don't want people to be able to come in from, you know, the other community on the other side. But having lived in South DeKalb myself and lived in a community off of Redan and South Indian Creek, or near South Indian Creek, that actually had that back access, it is really beneficial and it's very unfortunate that there have been many communities have been built without that type of connectivity. But with that said, this is the site plan that was originally approved for this site by the prior owner. And since that time, the rules changed, quite honestly. When we developed this site plan, we were allowed to have units that were at 20 feet in width. In 2015, DeKalb County changed the zoning code. And when that zoning code change came, the zoning that had been on this property was discontinued. It was RM 100, it became MR1. And under this code, they adopted a 25-foot minimum width for units in the MR1 zoning district. Kind of unfortunate that those who drafted that code did not understand that builders actually don't build in odd numbers. Didn't know that myself until I started running into this problem. They build typically width-wise, 20 feet, 22 feet, 24 feet, 26 feet, not 25 feet. And so we keep running up against this issue that in order to get a smaller width unit, we have to keep changing the zoning. And so that is what we see here. On this site plan, though, I think what has happened is that really has allotted an opportunity for the community to come back and have some further input. Things have changed since 2007, and we know that there's a lot more emphasis on things like walkability, green space within communities, making sure that we have additional parking spaces, things of that nature. And so since that zoning in 2007, I wanted to kind of go over a couple of the things that have changed. One, we are providing now for a playground in this area with seating, shading, fence, a totlot. We've got the mail kiosk, that's a new change because back in 2007, you could have mail delivery to each unit. You no longer can have that, so you have to have the mail kiosk. We do have a couple of parking spaces in front of that mail kiosk, but quite honestly, we hope that people will walk over to get their mail and not drive over. It's a small community. We will have underground detention on this site. That detention pond right now is located within the buffer area adjacent to the park. Please note that we actually, I actually worked and negotiated with the city when the city was first formed to do the 30-foot sanitary and stormwater easement. So we actually got that easement from the city, and there's also an existing easement within the buffer that allows us to have access to the public water and sewer as well to get from, to have gravity flow to get from Covington Highway down to the line that we're connecting into to the park. So we will be seeking a variance. It appears that we'll have to do that in order to allow us to be able to grade and put in the sewer line, although I do believe that there may be an allowance for doing a perpendicular to allow utility lines to go through. But with regards to the underground detention, once that detention pond is put in, then it will be grassed over, reseeded, and can have plantings and the other things to rebuffer that area. We do also provide for the 50-foot transitional buffer adjacent to the existing Cove Lake community. That is an under-stirred buffer, and we are very cognizant of that. We did have one of, at our community meeting last night, there was a request for fencing along that property line, and we will speak with the owner with regards to that. I don't think that that will be a problem, but they would like some kind of fencing there so that it won't become a cut-through. We also will be providing sidewalks, that's one of the things. There was actually one person online last night that was not excited about the sidewalks, quite honestly. With the Circle K that has been located at the top of the street, the sidewalk stops before it gets into the heart of the community. We will be adding the sidewalks. There were some who were a little bit concerned about, you know, having that walkability, but it is something, as we explained to them, that the county, or sorry, that the city requires with regards to street improvements. So we will be installing those five-foot sidewalks along the frontage. We also added at the request of the Fire Marshal that there will be a minimum of 23 visitor parking spaces. I note that the minimum requirement under the code for special, for townhome units is 1.75 units, parking spaces per unit, which would be 110.25 parking spaces for the 63 units. The maximum, remember that the code has a minimum and a maximum. The maximum is 3.25 spaces per unit or 204.75 parking spaces. We are currently proposing three spaces per unit with these units having a one-car garage with a parking pad in the front, or a parking pad in the rear. And then additionally, we will have these 23 additional parking spaces. So our parking space ratio is at three spaces per unit or 189 parking spaces per unit. Beat it up, Michelle. We also have spoken with the community in looking at doing some new signage. We would be sharing signage, and we have agreed that these are just some representative concept signs. They would like to work more closely with us on what the signs ultimately will look like before construction starts. But you see the pillars on either side is what they have now, and what we are proposing is to do a joint monument sign that will better elevate both communities. And so we are proposing that this one be called the Park at Cove Lake, and then you have the regular Cove Lake community. These are some sample elevations. The proposed conditions that have been presented by staff, I'm sure incorporate some of the things that we've already talked about. Probably one of the most important things is that from a fire perspective, that these units will either be sprinkled or have the two-hour firewall installed, which was also a request by the Fire Marshal. Finally, we have provided to the community a zoning agreement. That agreement will give them some latitude to make sure that we abide by the agreements that we have discussed with them, including replacing the two existing Cove Lake entrance pillars with a monument sign, also naming the community the Park at Cove Lake. They wanted something that would be consistent with the rest of the community and also doing some subdivision blade signs right at the corners into those communities. We would also add to our restrictive covenants that the Park at Cove Lake will share equally in the costs and expenses for the maintenance of the flock camera and other security surveillance systems that may be within that community, along with sharing expenses for the maintenance of the sign, the lighting, and the landscaping, and that we will work cooperatively to address some of the traffic issues that they're having coming out, including doing a traffic light warrant study and working with GDOT. So with that, we respectfully request approval based on the conditions submitted by staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Battle. Commissioners, are there any questions for Attorney Battle? Seeing that there are none, do you have any other persons who wish to speak in support of the application? All right, okay, thank you. At this time, community, are there any persons who wish to speak in opposition to this application? You can come forth and give your name and your address to the podium. Good evening. Is there a microphone by the, okay?
My name is Marty Garrison. I'm a homeowner in the Cove Lake subdivision. My address is 2399 Lake Cove Court. I am very, very concerned as a homeowner about the traffic, the one-way in and the one-way out in our community. Since Circle K has come to our community, we have had a number of accidents. Right there when... Right there where the, you're leaving Circle K, the stop sign is there, but it has totally, well, not totally ignored, but this is mainly the cost of the accidents. We've also had an increase of numbers of accidents right there at the intersection of Covington Highway and Cove Lake Road. of, um, Covington Highway and Cove Lake Road. If Cove Lake consists of 113 homes, one-way in and one-way out. Now we're going to add 63 homes on that same street, the entries of our subdivision. That's 63 more homes, maybe two cars per home, coming out on a very small area to get to Covington Highway. We find this very, very dangerous. Also with the Circle K being there, so close to our community, the crime, the trash, the loitering, the littering that they have brought to our community is horrific. We all know that trash brings crime, and we can't, just can't see anything getting, we can't see, I can't see things getting better unless Stonecrest step in and help us. The agreement that they made in 2007, all we got to see was the agreement on the screen. We don't know who signed it, can't even see that. Looks like initials. We don't, we don't know if that's a scratch piece of paper, and now you're telling us that that's an agreement. Now, I know that our board has met with, um, Attorney Battle. Attorney Battle has met with the homeowners twice, but the, me as a homeowner, I was expecting the board to come and meet with us without the attorneys, their attorneys, so that we can discuss our needs and what possibilities that we can take to keep our, well, so that our neighborhood can be safe. We are, I feel as though my home is in such jeopardy now. And I know the value is going up on property, but it's not because we're looking good, it's because that's just the way the market is and the demand. Our neighborhood itself is going down, down, down. It, it just, I can't comprehend, like I'd say, make it make sense why we would have this amount of cars coming out of these, of two subdivisions and also a problem gas station with dead traffic. Circle K, from my understanding, in the beginning, was not supposed to be open 24 hours. They're open 24 hours. And from my understanding, when they changed ownership, it was okay to do that. How is that possible? Make it, I mean, if this was the plan when Circle K first came, how can another owner come in and change it and say, "Okay, I'm going to be 24 hours. I'm going to allow the lottery." And we suffer, and what we're told is, they are private property. They can do what they want to do. We've been there since 1999, and we're going to allow a business to come in and destroy our community, and then on top of it, add 60 more, 63 more townhomes with additional cars on what isn't even a half of a mile? When the park has events, these vehicles are parking on that same street. We're okay with that, because that's temporary. Now we got 63 more homes, these 23 additional spaces that they have, where are they going to be? Are they going to be on that same street? And we are a homeowners association that doesn't allow parking on the streets for more than a certain amount of hours, so that emergency vehicles, our, our neighborhood can continue to look neat and clean. And with the help, I mean, Stonecrest, we're, we're, we're being drowned in, on a community that we love and want to stay. And it just don't seem, make it make sense to me that we're not as, that we as the invested homeowners are, uh, continuing to have things put in place by government that hurts us. If anything, our homeowners association did not come and talk to us individually. We had the board go and make these dealings with, with the attorney without the input of us, where we can come together. It's like a, a, a family going out there, and, 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 and the family does not know what's going on, because a couple people went and made decisions. We were waiting for the, our home, I was, for our homeowners association to call a meeting with the homeowners, "Let's discuss this. Let's see what we as an association can do to keep us safe." And that never happened. The meeting did, they did meet with us again with the attorney. That's not what we need. We need to come together as a community and decide what we can do to keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello. Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Allison Cook. I am a resident of Stonecrest. I is 5825 Lakeview Circle, Lithonia, Georgia, 30058. Um, as my neighbor Marty stated, we do have some concerns, uh, as residents of the neighborhood. Um, so only the homeowners association board met with the attorneys a couple times, and they were not able to bring anything back to our full community. So yesterday, we had maybe about six or seven people who met with the attorneys, and I, for one, I have big concerns, because the 50-foot buffer, uh, a part of that is in my backyard. So we're there proposing to have an entrance for these townhomes. Someone can literally walk from the street and walk into my backyard, and that's cause for concern. So I addressed that issue, and I said, "Hey, there needs to be a fence. There needs to be some sense of security." And what bothers me is that that was never even an option, that was never even a thought. Why wasn't that a thought? A 50-foot buffer is not enough. They had surveyors come out multiple times. You said that this was an agreement that was done back in 2007. People surveyed the land, they came and they surveyed it again last summer. The surveyors were standing in my backyard, I could see them. So that should be enough information to know, "Hey, a 50-foot buffer is not enough. There needs to be something else for security." You know what I'm saying? So I feel like we're not at a, at a point where we can make a decision where this is okay. And again, one-way in, one-way out. I've only been in the, in my home for four years, and there's been so much crime. So there have been shootings at the Chevron across the street. And, you know, there are trees there, but bullets fly. There was a shooting at Circle K a couple weeks ago. Bullets fly. Someone's home had bullets in them, because of what happened. So it concerns me that we're adding 63 additional townhomes right in my backyard. There has to be some extra type of security to help us. We know that DeKalb County PD, they're always hiring, they don't have enough staff. So what are we going to do? We, we feel like we're at a loss. People are just moving into, literally into my backyard. It's only a problem when it's your backyard. Other residents, they may not be concerned, because it's not their backyard. It's the other side of the neighborhood. But I can literally look out of my back window and see where they've surveyed the land, and I have an issue, and I'm just not okay with it unless they can provide some type of additional security besides the 50-foot buffer. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other persons wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing that there are none, if the applicant would like to come back and we have time for rebuttal, if you want to address any of the issues? Okay. Well, is there, um, I'd like to put forth a motion if we do five minutes to the applicant and opposition for additional time. So this way we can hear the rebuttal, so the applicant can properly address the concerns of the citizens. Is, uh, is there a second?
Second that motion.
All in favor, vote for additional time of five minutes. Vote by saying aye. Aye, let the record reflect, it's unanimous by the commissioners, five additional minutes for the applicant and the opposition. Thank you, Attorney Battle.
Um, I'd like to, uh, address one issue that, um, Ms. Garrison referenced. Um, she was asking about the plans that showed the initials and everything. Those are actually the conditions of zoning. Um, they've got the item number from the clerk's office and the date, and those were markings from the clerk, um, with, uh, DeKalb County. Um, and those were the conditions that were marked up and initialed by, at that time, Commissioner Lee May. So I'd be more than happy to share those, so that it's very clear that those are not Michelle Battle's markings, those are literally straight from the county. I just didn't put the full minutes, um, in my presentation. Um, with regards to, um, the fence and the security, um, that was discussed with the HOA, and, um, that was how we discussed the flock cameras, to the extent that we needed to add any additional cameras. Um, I think that we're more than, um, open to that, particularly, um, you know, along maybe the perimeter, fencing, things of that nature. Um, I don't think that the fence, and to the extent that there would be a condition on having a fence along that 50-foot, um, buffer line, um, adjacent to Cove Lake, I think that that's a very reasonable request. Um, it wasn't so much that it had not been, um, thought of, but we don't, you know, sometimes when you put up a fence along, um, those property lines, um, if the owners on the other side already have a pro, have a fence, then you've also got to take down trees and do other things in order to put those fences up. We do have a choice about whether the fence goes right on the property line, or if the fence would go on the interior, um, of the subdivision that we're developing, so that what the homeowners on the other side see is trees first, and they never really see the fence. I think that that would be a better way of going about doing it, um, and provide a little bit more, so it feels like a larger space there, even though the HOA would own, um, that buffer area. Um, so that is something that we certainly can do, and that will, um, reduce some of the disruption along that, along that property line. Um, so again, we already indicated a willingness to work, um, on security-related issues. Um, it is very unfortunate about the, um, Circle K being there. Uh, as I told the community, I had been approached about that and trying to assist with that. I did not take that, because I didn't think that was an appropriate location to have that, um, Circle K, um, particularly when you had one at the time directly across the street. Um, but what we know is this, this is a residential community, and we're trying to bring more residential use, um, along this space. Um, there had been some discussion about trying to get access through, um, the commercial property right in front of us, um, even acquiring that property, but they are asking an exorbitant amount of money for that site. Um, I'm not sure what their future plans are with regards to it, but it is zoned commercially, which means that there may be another commercial use that may end up on, on that spot. Um, and so that impacts everybody, so I think that that gives an opportunity for both communities to work, um, together cooperatively to make sure that the community stays safe. Um, one thing that we did, um, indicate that we were willing to do, and I'm still going to do that, I've put out a request to meet with, um, the mayor along with, um, um, staff, as to whether or not maybe there's a possibility of having some kind of access route, um, through the park property. Um, we are fortunate that we are adjacent to city-owned property, um, and maybe there's some opportunity there to have an access point from, um, one of the internal roads in the, in the subdivision, so that there is, um, maybe even a, an emergency exit or something of that nature. Um, I don't know whether that would be well-received or not, and then we would have to talk to GDOT about the location of the curb cut for that, but that is something that we certainly, um, are happy to at least, um, explore with, um, the city, because that would be, would make the most sense, because the person that's directly in front of us is clearly not necessarily being quite as reasonable with, with how much they're charging or whatever for, for what they're doing. And we would have to literally buy that property, um, to make it make sense, which means we would just be adding more units into this community. So, um, those are my responses. Um, again, I don't control how the HOA communicates with the rest of its residents. Uh, we did host this meeting, um, again, yesterday. Um, we picked a date and time that, um, the HOA asked us to, to work cooperatively with them, um, and we did pass notices out, um, throughout the community. So, um, with that, again, we would respectfully request, um, approval and have no problem adding a condition with regards to the fence. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Battle. Are there any other persons who wish to speak in opposition to Ms. Fay Cofield? If you want to come forth and give your name and address?
Sorry about that. One of the concerns that I have, is one of the concerns that I have is the abundance of townhomes that are being built in Stonecrest. First of all, I'm very familiar, I'm very familiar with this location, and it is a high-crime area. And when you look at high crime, because you know, my, my area specialty is crime, okay? I mean, I know that's kind of, well, it's not my area specialty, but it's what I am trained in, okay? When you have an area that is high crime, you have to bring something into that area that is going to reduce the crime. Now, they're asking for a, uh, a, a buffer of trees. A buffer of trees will not stop the criminal element from coming in and going out. What we need to start looking at in Stonecrest is a requirement of fences. Of, if you've ever gone to BJ's, most people don't understand why that almost 20-foot fence is near the gas pumps. It is not there because BJ's wanted to put a fence up. It is there because on the other side of that is a townhome community. Now, everybody wants to talk about these flock cameras. Flock cameras, to me, are just something that takes pictures. Because when you get right down to it, when we turn on the news, what we always see is, "Here's a picture of the person that did this." And we also hear from the police department that if you have information, call Crime Stop, okay? I wasn't trained like that. I was trained, if you have a problem, you call the police department. But the police department, as they said, is extremely short, short-staffed. Now, people need a place to live, I can understand that. And sometimes you can bring something into an area that helps to build up the area. This might be that type of project. But you also have to look at what you have to do to make it desirable. And people don't want to be up on top of the Circle K. So what you need to have them to do is to put a fence, a nice fence. I think, I think all of you nodded your head when I said about the BJ's fence over there in, uh, uh, Rockdale. We need to look at that. We also need to look at the type of con, of the type of townhouses that we're building. We need to look at the type of townhouses that we are building, because we are building what I like to call ghetto, low-income townhouse. Now, if you go right around the corner, I mean, you don't have to, you don't have to drive far, just right around the corner, go into Rockdale County, the first street is Abbott. If you turn on Abbott, you will see some townhouses that they built there. Those are the type of townhouses we need to see in Stonecrest. The continuation of building these lower-end townhouses for these exorbitant rates does nothing but in a few years create a problem. They create a problem of sales to investors, or in many cases, investors buying them upfront. Now, that's just my position. You know, fortunately, I live in a house, I live in a R100, I live in a R100 neighborhood, and I live backing up to the nature preserve. The only thing I got to worry about coming through my yard is some deer and some other little creatures. But we have to start looking to build housing that is going to bring people into the community to make it a better place. These people have lived in that area for, it was since 1999. They, they had a nice area until Circle K moved in. And we also have the storage facility down the street, we have a gas station across the street. We need to make sure that, since this is already looking like it's going to be approved, that they be required to make safety of things to make it better. Another thing, you have got to stop building these one-way-in, one-way-out communities. If they're higher at the front of the community, how are the people at the back of the community going to get out? If there's only one way in, how do you get out if there's a hurricane and trees are down? You know? We have to look at all of that, and we, we need to start taking it into consideration. We need to stop just saying, "We're building houses." We need to build houses that are for one hand, but when we start looking at what we're going to sell, we need to make sure that we're starting at the top, and to give you a good example of how you can do it. All you have to look is, is over there off of Glenwood at, uh, what is it? All you have to look is over there off of Glenwood at, what is it, Bill Kennedy, where they built the Kroger. They got a Kroger at one end of the block. They got a Publix at the other end of the block. They have multiple, multifamily units. They got houses and everything else. So let's stop, let's stop building ghetto housing and start building something that's going to bring up our community.
Thank you, Ms. Colfield. All right, that's... No, I said thank you. Yeah, I think that was the time. Okay, commissioners, any questions? If not, we'll close, give a motion for closing the public hearing so we can go into discussion.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Is there a second? All right, it's been properly motioned by Commissioner Williams to close public hearing on this item, seconded by Commissioner Hawkins. All in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye, let the record reflect unanimous approval that we close the public hearing on RZ25-004. Commissioners, the floor is open for discussion and/or motions. Commissioner Williams and then Commissioner Walker, then Commissioner Williams.
I would like, can I address this to Attorney Battle?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, and I may have missed this, you know, somewhere in reading these recommendations on here, but they answered my question regarding the HOA because that was, you know, I thought that was a big deal. But as we look at the photos of the type of condos, homes that's going to be built, where are the garages on these, on the...
So when this project was originally approved, and I don't know if we can go back, go back to the site plan. When the project was originally approved, it was required that there be rear-entry townhomes. Now, rear-entry townhomes...
Fantastic.
Right. That's not normally, but the builders want to come in here and build.
Right.
And so this particular project, very forward-looking back in 2007, was Commissioner May's requirement that they be rear-entry. So these units will enter, there's two alleyways, well, actually, there's multiple alleys, but the units that are along the front facing Cove Lake, all of those will be accessed off of this interior, off of this interior road right here. And then these units all face these internal streets. This one's called Whitewater Way and this one's called, you know, Big Bridge Drive. And their access for parking is through these alleys on the back. And so there's an alley here, there's an alley here, and there's going to be an alley on this side. So when you're walking, you're going to see sidewalks and regular street, you know, home frontages. So these units, we anticipate the purchase prices being certainly consistent with other things that you've seen, the new product that you've seen in the, in the community. You may be familiar with the Rockland project that's off of Wellborn. I worked on that particular project. Those are front-entry units, but these are, again, rear-entry units. We're expecting the price points to be probably in the mid-3s and up with regards to this product. And with the sidewalks, it'll be a very walkable community because, and they will have no parking signs, I would assume throughout in order for safety purposes, which is why we also have internally to this project the additional 23 parking spaces. So those parking spaces are one up in this area. We've got a couple here over by the park. We've got a couple in each one of these blocks. There's two here. There's a couple here. There's additional ones over on this side that are parallel-type parking. So there's internally those 23 guest parking spaces. So they're not parking out on Cove Lake Road. My assumption is there, I think I've seen some no parking signs along Cove Lake Road, but there will be no parking there. All the parking will be internal and within either at the rear, they'll have a pad in front. So they'll have their garage and a pad for a guest parking space and then they'll also have these additional 23 parking spaces throughout the community.
Because I lived at one time in Franklin, Tennessee and of course, the houses were, you know, $800,000, $900,000. But that parking in the back was, you could not, you didn't, you never saw a garbage truck or anything like that, you know? Everything was around the back like you were saying and that kind of helped out. And then another question that I had was you mentioned the mail, that they could walk to get their mail?
There's a, the mail kiosk, they can drive over there. There's two parking spaces in front of where the mail kiosk. That is now a U.S. Post Office requirement that they don't do individual mail delivery. So we have the mail kiosk. It is towards the back of the community and, you know, you can drive in that day. You know, normally people are just driving in, pick up their mail and drive back out.
Right, because you're hearing in the news quite a bit about people breaking into these mailboxes that are out there that you can walk to, but...
It's unfortunate.
I know there's other areas that have them where you can go into like a building, you know, right? And your mail is there.
Yeah, it's just going to be a kiosk on the back, but I think the nice part is a lot of the times on the subdivisions, I see them closer to the front, but because of some of the other activity along in that area with the Circle K, I think it's actually kind of better that it's more towards the back. People won't be looking specifically for that.
And one other thing, what I had a concern with was on here, it said, well, you answered the price range, but it says the builders to be determined.
Yeah, so the property is under, they're putting it under contract, so they won't be, the current owner will not be the builder. Mr. Miles is really more, quite honestly, in the self-storage business. And he had, he actually at one point had asked for this property to be rezoned and had been meeting with the community to rezone it to a self-storage facility. And then the city changed its rules with regards to self-storage. The one across the street came in and then that ended up getting dropped. So he came back to doing or developing it for this purpose. Mark Walton, who I've worked with for like 20 years, he has been developing the site plan for this and we have spoken with some of the builders that have been looking at the project.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
I have a couple of questions for staff. Traffic impact study, should that be done prior to the building? Or is that after?
That's typically done during this process.
During this process, okay. Is there a timeline on the traffic study? Because I understand from the opposition that they are concerned about traffic.
Yes, ma'am. I want to say the, we had that request come up before and I think the applicant can address.
So what we had proposed was if this is approved, then we would do a traffic study and then whatever improvements are being required, that we would address those. What we know is that coming highway is a GDOT highway. There's only so much left to do. The city can't tell GDOT what to do and neither can we. One of the problems seems to be maybe some of the timing on the light because they were indicating that there was problems making left turns out and also people running the light. So that means that GDOT needs to do some work on either the timing of the light, which is why we said we would do the traffic warrant, traffic light warrant study so that whatever changes that GDOT would need to make, they would have to make those changes. We wouldn't be making those changes. But otherwise, you know, from the perspective of GDOT, there's already a dedicated left-turn lane out. There's a right-turn lane out. There's a straightaway, you know, the, there's one lane that goes straight that you can turn, either go straight down Wellborn or turn right. And there's also a dedicated left-turn lane and a dedicated left-turn light that's already in place there at that intersection. And they made those improvements probably, I don't know, it was like five, 10 years ago, five, five, seven years ago, something like that. Because I remember them coming in around the same time that we were negotiating and dealing with the Rockland Townhome Project across the street.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to make a comment to the two residents that came up and spoke. You know, from what I hear, Ms. Battle is very open to having communication and they're open to the fence. She's open to sharing documentation and I would encourage you all to get with your HOA, who can get in touch with her or, listen, she's here. Have a conversation with her. I would like to definitely add some recommendation regarding some type of fencing since you all are open to that. And I think it's wonderful when developers can work with the community adjacent to where they're building. It just makes my heart happy. I hope that you all can figure out how to add another exit or entrance to this community because I just truly, truly despise the one-way-in, one-way-out. It is just horrific. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Any other commissioners, any other discussion, further discussion on this applicant? Seeing that there are none, the floor is open for a motion. Is there a motion on the application?
Make a motion to approve with conditions and the additional condition regarding the fencing. Did I say that right?
Okay. All right, there's a motion for approval with staff recommendations and recommendation of additional fencing to go into the development. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, the motion has been properly seconded by Commissioner Hawkins. All in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Let the record reflect, it's been recommended for approval with conditions and additional condition regarding fencing. Thank you. All right, this time staff can come forth with the next item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, sir. The next item on the agenda is SDP 24-000004, 6750, Stonecrest Industrial Way. This petition is for approval of preliminary plat for a proposed logistics center. Okay, this is the preliminary plat sketch for Swift Creek Logistics Center. This is a large, large tract of property. The property was rezoned several years ago for this proposed development. The, I'll go through this real quick and then come back to the site plan. So the future land use map shows the property has a heavy industrial designation. The current zone is light industrial. And if we go back to the site plan, the request is to subdivide the property into three separate parcels. The, there's a cul-de-sac that terminates at the edge of the property. The applicant was required to extend the cul-de-sac into the property, given it legal access. That process was submitted to staff and reviewed for approval. Each lot, each proposed building is over 1 million square feet. There is, listed on the property is the acreage and the size of the building. And I'll let the applicant explain and give the details on those. But they are three separate buildings and they are proposed in three separate lots. This is for preliminary plat approval and staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Any questions for the Deputy Director by Commissioners? Commissioner Williams?
So I'm getting ready to ask a stupid question. Swift Creek Logistics Center, what do they do?
Currently, these spec building, they will be built for lease. We've not given indication that there are current tenants.
Oh, so we're just building buildings for possibly rental?
That's all I understand. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for the Deputy Director? Seeing that there are none, if the Commissioners would like to do a motion to open public hearing, the floor is open for a motion to open public hearing.
Make a motion to open a public hearing for SDP 24-004?
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
All right, it's been motioned put by Commissioner Williams that we open public hearing on item SDP 24-004, properly seconded by Commissioner Hawkins. All in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye, let the record reflect unanimous approval for opening the application, the motion for the public hearing. And at this time, if the applicant is present here, can come forth and give their name and address and begin their presentation.
Good evening. Steve Gollbeck, 1197 Peachtree, Georgia. I work for IDI Logistics, the owner of this property. I'm joined here by Dan Winemeyer, VHP, 3015 Devil Road Chase, Roswell, Georgia, we're the civil engineers and surveyors for the property. Just to give a little geographic of where the property is. So this is, you know, located kind of north of Stonecrest, city proper. This is the property, which is basically a wood lot that's been zoned industrial for a long time. Home Depot is off to the east. The new Pepsi facility is kind of to the northeast there. This is the current piece of property. Some things, you know, we wanted to note just from the public meeting a couple of weeks ago, there's a 250 underdirt buffer on the, on the west side and most of the north side, anywhere that it's close to residential, there's also power lines on the side, industrial on the east side and then is to the south side. We take this one large and turn it into three proper, so that's a request, your approval.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? All right, seeing that there are none, is there anyone who wants to speak in support of the application? Seeing that there are none, is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing that there are none, I'd like to, your motion to, I motion that we close public hearing on applicant SDP 24-004.
I second that motion.
This motion been offered by the Chair, properly seconded by Commissioner Williams. All in favor, voting to close public hearing, vote by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Let the record reflect unanimous approval to close public hearing. Commissioners, the floor is open for discussion and/or motions. Commissioner Williams?
I am so sorry, Director. So this one piece of land, they want to break up into three lots? Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and it's just going to be like one big building per lot?
Yes, ma'am.
One big open building?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The recommendation. These are some really big pieces of paper and that I don't quite understand how to read them. So which one should I be looking at?
I think it's probably the next two. So there's, is that another one after that? There's one, one other sheet that show one, the first building and the other two buildings would be on the last sheet.
Yes.
I'm sorry, bear with me.
No worries.
Is it?
Yes, that's the, that's the third sheet. It shows the two buildings there.
So it's just two buildings, not three?
That is, and the, the third building would be on the other sheet. No, that, that's one parcel, one building. And the other, the rectangles and squares that are on there are the buildings. And then if you flip it over, because they are so large, it's on two separate sheets, okay?
I'm sorry.
No worries.
Just want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Before I give my vote.
Yeah, up on the screen.
Yes, that's about it.
So much better, thank you.
Is, is the piece of property with the three, only one of the buildings is a million-square footer. The other one's smaller. I think they're 400 and... I think they're four hundred and five hundred.
What do people typically use these buildings for?
All sort thing, you know, Walmart, Nextdoor, Home Depot.
Warehouses. Not storage.
Okay.
We don't know yet. That's what she said. We don't know yet. Okay. Thank you. I have a better understanding. And thank you for that picture. It definitely helps.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Hawkins?
I'd just like to ask staff, as a point of clarification that may help some of my fellow Commissioners. When you have a plat map like this and three proposed building, considering the neighbors of Home Depot and Pepsi. More than likely, we're looking at a low-impact use that more than likely would be warehousing or a large tenant, sky zone, something to that effect, right? The perfect world, it's the golf place? Yeah, Topgolf. But, but that's what we're looking at. Large industrial buildings with, with low, low-impact travel.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Floor is open for motions. Commissioner Hawkins?
I move that we approve project, excuse me, item number S P D two four dash zero 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 four as submitted by staff with the attached conditions.
I second that motion.
Okay, the motion has been properly entered by Commissioner Hawkins and properly seconded by Commissioner Williams. All in favor vote by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose?
Uh, aye.
Let the record reflect that three Commissioners, Hawkins, Williams, and Hubbard voted for recommending approval. And one dissent by Commissioner Walker. The motion passes with recommendation for approval. Thank you. And this time, Mr. Deputy Director, we're ready for the next item on the agenda?
Okay, the next, next item on the agenda is special land use permit twenty-five dash zero 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 six, fifty-nine forty, Farrington Road. Ms. Maisha Rashad, the request is for a special land use permit for, to reestablish a package store or liquor store. Some background on the property, the current, the property is currently zoned C one, local commercial. And is one point four eight acres. It consists of two buildings and two accessory buildings. The primary building comprised nine hundred, nine thousand one hundred and fifty-two square feet. The structure was built in nineteen seventy-one. There are approximately seven suites between the two buildings. There appears to be only two suites that are vacant. The purpose of this request is to reestablish the liquor store. The previous tenant in the space was a liquor store, but closed in June of twenty twenty-five, according to the city records. The property owner was within a thousand feet of the subject property with mail notices in October. The special land use permit was held November the thirteenth here at City Hall. There were eight residents in attendance that spoke on this matter. Their concerns were neighborhood character, safety, parking, and the property being used for commercial, as a commercial use. The subject property has a land use designation of urban neighborhood. It is currently zoned C one, local commercial. This is an area photograph of the proposed property, subject property. And this is a location map. It is just south of I twenty, near the intersection of I twenty and Farrington Road, where the new construction of the bridge over I twenty. This is a site plan of the subject property. And this is a interior layout of the proposed space. Some site photos. Okay, and staff is recommending approval of this request. Staff feel that the, the, the property was a liquor store in the past. It was built in nineteen seventy-one and meet all the requirements except for the setbacks. And that is due to the change in ordinance over the years. So staff does recommend approval with the conditions, five conditions. Number one is the fenced industrial areas shall be painted with a consistent color as the existing building. Landscaping shall be installed to beautify the property to screen park, the parking area. The monument sign to the north, to the, near the western boundary of the property shall be removed. The property owner shall install high-resolution exterior security cameras to cover the entrance and exit, parking area, loading zones, and loading zones. And the footage shall be stored a minimum of thirty days and made accessible to law enforcement upon request. And no consumption of alcohol shall be permitted on the premises. And a clear sign, a clear signage stating that shall be posted on the property. With that, staff, staff is recommending approval with those conditions.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Commissioners, any questions for the Deputy Director? Commissioner Williams?
How many other liquor stores are in the area and how far apart are they?
There are two that's in, oh, two that's over a mile away, the closest being a mile. And there's three that's over, I'm sorry, there's an additional one, make it a total of three that is just under two miles away. So there's, within two miles, there's two, three other.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Hawkins?
I, I have sort of the same question, but with a slight revision. What's the distance of another use, i.e. gas stations that sell, say, beer and wine within the area and the proximity?
There is a convenience store on the adjacent property, and I'll get to that real quick here. So if you look to the right of the, of the, of the subject building, there's a convenience store there. I did check with the business license revenue department about requirements for distant requirement for additional alcohol outlets. It was determined that the, that this outlet only serve beer and wine. And it's looked at separately as from a liquor store who sell distilled liquid, liquor.
Say that one more time. I'm sorry.
Okay, so it, it is looked at differently because this, the subject property would sell liquor, distilled liquor. The existing convenience store only sell beer and wine, and those are looked at separately.
Interesting. Is there a reason for that?
I couldn't tell you. I, I'm not versed in the alcohol ordinance. That, that, that falls on the alcohol ordinance. And I, I can tell you that the state plays a part in that and defining those, those ordinances.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions for the Deputy Director? Seeing that there are none, the floor is open for a motion to open public hearing.
Make a motion to open public hearing for Slub two five dash zero zero six?
I second that motion. Motion has been offered by Commissioner Williams that we open public hearing for Slub two five dash zero zero six, seconded by the Chair. All in favor vote by saying aye. Aye. Let the record reflect unanimous approval that we open public hearing. At this time, the applicant can come forth and give his name and address and begin their presentation.
Thank you, Madam, Mr. Chair. I'm Hakeem Hilliard. Tell I'm not a singer, I guess. Good evening again. My name is Hakeem Hilliard. I'm an attorney with Schillivis Grubman Law Firm in Atlanta, Georgia. I'm here this evening on behalf of Farrington Package, and I'm happy to be with you all this evening. I wanted to kind of start by answering the last question because I work with a lot of gas stations, convenience stores, and grocery stores that sell liquor, beer, or wine, or in combination. And it, as a policy matter across the state, that's why you see a gas station. You don't see liquor component associated with it. It's considered a convenience item, whereas liquor is a, is viewed differently by the state of Georgia. And so they are regulated a little differently than, than other uses. This particular store has been a liquor store in this strip shopping center since two thousand and three, when it originally opened. I understand that it's operated over time without incident or, or, or some of the concerns that people generally associated with liquor stores in the area. I was trying to figure out why, and it was communicated, I think, that it was just that the owner in particular was a very steadfast in making sure that this business operated in a way that is appropriate and lawful. So there's, I don't think there's a record of violations. I think the reason we're here only is because the use permit requirement was established probably after the, the last store closed. The last store closed and stopped operating. So that's why we're here today. It's, it's an eighteen hundred and forty square foot space. It has almost, more than sixty-plus parking spaces in that plaza. As, as Mr. Steele said, there's seven different spaces available, five that are occupied now. All of them are what we consider destination places, a beauty shop, a barber shop, restaurant that's been there for some time. It is, it's a safe place, and I think the owner would probably want to take responsibility for why it operates that way. But if you look at the natural conditions associated with the property, you'll see Farrington Road is a busy road. And so although there's residential across the other side of Farrington, it's not a place that is conducive to walking traffic. And it's walking traffic at some convenience stores and gas stations where you see some of the violations that occur from period of time, where people will buy single cans of beer or liquor, and they'll stand outside and they'll drink it where it's unlawful to do so. You might find underage people doing that. This location is really just a driving destination, not really conducive to walking traffic. So as a natural condition, it, it serves the issues of security and safety at that, at that plaza. We do hear the condition about cameras. We think it's a good condition and all the other conditions. We accept them fully. The conditions related to landscape and all those things will provide a benefit, and we know that that'll be good for the, for the community. The operating hours of this business have historically been from eleven A M. to ten P M. in, in the evening. And again, we see this as an amenity. It's not the traditional liquor store that you, we think that falls in the category of those that are prolifer, that are proliferation in, in communities that don't need to be there. This space is, is a significant space. I don't know how you all are. I don't, I don't drink at home, but I'll buy bottle of liquor at a liquor store to keep it there for guests that might want to come to the, to my home. Or if I'm going somewhere, I'm going to buy a gift. And it's those types of stores. And this is what this, this, this business seeks to operate. So as you think about the proliferation issues and other concerns you might have about this type of use, I hope you take into consideration the fact that this business has been there for more than twenty years without incident, well-run and well-operated. And I, you know, we think it's done a really good job of managing that and providing a mini for the community without being a detriment to the community. So while there are other places that probably shouldn't be there, we plan to operate lawfully. We don't do anything that encourages people to purchase alcohol and drink it on sight, which some stores do, the ones that do that wrong. And you may know that they sell cups of ice that encourages people to take a cup up outside and drink in the car or on their car. They'll sell single cigarettes if they're selling cigarettes. They'll do other things that encourage the type of activity that we all want to discourage. But I think for stores that operate well and have a history of, of, of operating within the regulations, they are, they should be supported, and we're asking you to support this request as well. And we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Attorney Hilliard. Commissioners, any questions for Attorney Hilliard? Being that there are none, are there any persons wishing to speak in support of the application? Seeing that there are none, are there any persons wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Seeing that there is Ms. Fay Colfield? You come forth and all right.
I wish you guys would add, like, I'm in the middle, okay, because I'm not speaking against it. And like I said at the other meeting, I knew the owner, and in fact, we had provided security to him. We don't, we, let me make it clear. We only provided security to him because he was a friend. We don't do that kind of security. So it's no thing like I'm expecting to get any business. Because I think those of you who know me know, I rarely do security. And when I do security, somebody about, somebody's been threatened with a whole bunch of crazy. But my concern is that this is changing hands. And the previous owner was also on the property all the time. And he did not tolerate any, anything from not only the public, but the tenants that were there. And in fact, the reason we were there was because one of the tenants started having, shall we say, questionable people coming in and out who were hanging out in the parking lot. So I, I got a person, I think you, I'd be familiar with that person, Mr. Steve Mohammed, who went up there and was able to explain to the people the errors of their ways and the ability to find other locations to participate. Okay? So that's what we're concerned about. There is an apartment complex across the street. There are several apartment complexes across the street. And this is also, if you're familiar with the area, when you come down Farrington going eastbound, when you turn onto Chup Way, there's a short street that you can turn on that takes you back to those apartments on Farrington that have been a source of problems. And so what we don't want to see is we don't want to see the problems coming back to this location. Because sometimes when businesses change, people will try the new owner. So I have no problem with them changing, but I just want to have it in there somewhere. And you know, I've, I've kind of talked to them that they need to have some real security there just in case they have a problem or the ability to get security. I don't make referrals. I don't do it. They're on their own as far as getting it. But we do need to make sure, because you know, times are changing. And to show you the difference, there were problems next door. But those problems, even before Mr. Mohammed went over there, those problems did not cross over to this property. So, you know, he, he's correct. It hasn't been hardly anything going on over there. And we want to keep it that way. Okay? And before I give up the mic, you know, I kind of feel like an entertainer up here, before I give up the mic, I want to ask you, because the first person that came up with the apartments, Ms. Battle and everything, she gave us the impression that, with the townhouses. She gave us the impression that they were a done deal. So hopefully, in the future, even with this thing, you will make sure that the person that is here is the person that's going to be there. In other words, Mr. Abidi is going to be the owner, that Mr. Abidi is not going to transfer or he's not waiting for somebody to come and get it. Am I making myself clear? Because that is very important when you're just coming up here because you want to sell some property. But like I said, this has been, this, this store had, this store has not been a problem. And in fact, it's been a place where a lot of people have felt safe, even when the nightclub was going on, have felt safe stopping, you know, eight, nine o'clock at night. So, you know, I mean, you need to maybe add some, add some security. And I also hope you add something so that people who are neither opposed nor support can come up and speak.
Thank you, Ms. Col, thank you, Ms. Colfield. All right, any other persons wishing to speak? Seeing that there are none? Would the applicant like to come back with any rebuttal on anything? Attorney Hilliard?
Not any rebuttal. I just wanted to
Not, not any rebuttal. I just wanted to make sure I introduced Mr. Abdi, the, the, the owner, proposed owner of this location. If, should it be approved? He, he, he was here the last meeting. He's here tonight. I just wanted you to know that he's present and we do, we, we respect Ms. Colfield's recommendations and we would definitely, uh, uh, implement, uh, security measures. You know, because liquor stores have the amount of inventory that they have, you can't just operate like another business. They have to have security. It's, it's kind of a requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. All right, being that, that I open the, uh, floor for a motion to close public hearing?
Make a motion to co- uh, close public hearing for Slub twenty-five zero zero six.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, being the second given by Commissioner Walker, motion to close public hearing. Our Commissioner Williams, all in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye. Let the record reflect unanimous approval to close public hearing. The floor is open for discussion and or motions by the Commissioners. Commissioner Walt Williams.
I just want to make sure I heard correctly about the security. You are gonna have security, the owner. Can you talk? That, I want to hear from, I know, but I want to hear from the owner.
Hi, Abdullah Abdi, the owner. Do you need my address or? Uh, twelve twenty-nine Wetlands Court, Lawrenceville, Georgia. And, uh, just kind of to give a quick overview of everything, um, the previous owner Julius, he did work there since he got in two thousand and three. Uh, he literally having like health issues because he like, lady said, he used to be there all the time, making sure there was no riffraff. And no one in his family, for some reason, didn't want to inherit it and then that's why he's giving it up. It's not because, honestly, it wasn't not because it wasn't profitable, not because it wasn't safe, but just because he knew to do it right. He had to do it himself and he, he couldn't really find anyone to do that. Um, being completely honest, as everyone know, liquor store licenses are very profitable. He could have easily just renewed it and then just sold it off to someone for a big lump sum of money. But he chose to close it down because he didn't want to just give it to someone thinking they're just trying to get a quick cash grab or something. Uh, Mr. Julius has told me the exact same way he runs it and I, like the lady said, I want to just copy the exact same way. He's very strict about, uh, the best of a business is a quiet business and making sure, especially the loitering thing. Cause that's just, it should be like a fast food is the way he talks about it, in and out. You know, you don't get your Wendy's meal and then sit in the parking lot and eat it. You take it home or, you know? And that's kind of what he told me. If that answers your question, I'm sorry.
Are you gonna have security?
Yeah, I am gonna have a security.
Is security gonna be all day, half a day? What do you think? More on the weekend versus during the week?
Every day.
Every day.
As long as, from the per- the moment the people who open up until they close. Until that person closes up, locks up, gets in the car and drives off, and then that's when security is scheduled. So no one will ever be by themselves, you know?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Walker.
I'd just ask a quick question. Is that place open now? Is it closed?
It's closed.
Yeah, it's closed, right? And, and, cause I think I know exactly, I mean, where it is, you know?
And that's funny.
What is it now, though?
It's still like, it's not open, but the liquor store sign is still up. When I got the property from Mr. Julius and I was just cleaning up and kind of doing my weekly, just check of making sure everything's okay, I'll still get people knocking like, are you guys back open? And it's like, no, they just see like, there's still like old inventory on the wall and stuff, but it's, everything's the same, but just not running.
Thank you.
Any other, thank you, sir. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Hawkins. Oh, you don't have a question? Okay. All right. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of Slub twenty-five dash zero zero six with the recommendations by staff.
I second the, uh, recommendation.
All right, there's been a motion by the chair recommending approval with recommendations by staff, seconded by Commissioner Hawkins. All in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, for clarification, Commissioner Walker, what was your vote? For or against?
For.
For, okay. So let the record, uh, reflect, it's unanimous approval by the Commissioners for approval. Uh, thank you. And with that being the last case, uh, before we adjourn, I'd like to say happy holidays to everyone. Whatever is your flavor, be it Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah or Happy Kwanzaa. Wishing you a very happy holiday season. Stay safe. Uh, want to also congratulate, uh, Councilwoman Graves, Councilwoman Washington for winning their election. There is a, was a runoff for tonight between Councilwoman Grimes and also candidate Smith Washington or Washington Smith. We won't know those results until about nine thirty. So whichever one of those ladies do win the seat of the fifth district, we just want to congratulate her ahead of time. Also, we want to encourage everyone to stay active and vote. Once again, congratulations to Dr. Johnson and also, uh, a person I may know, Mr. Peter Hubbard, who they won the public, uh, commissioner, uh, races earlier during this election cycle. I want to make sure that you all stay vigilant. Next year is an election year for governor and statewide officers and county commissioners. So make sure you, uh, stay involved, vote, stay active. Thank you to everyone who came out and voiced their opinion either for or against applications because this is how your government work. And with that being said, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion that we adjourn for the year coming back next year?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Second, I second that motion. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Have a good evening, ladies and gentlemen.